Okay, welcome. Let's call the meeting to order. If you'll stand please, let's pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing please, and we'll have Mr. Corey Sheen from the homeless shelter forgive us our blessing.
Let's go ahead and bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, in your name we pray. Father, we ask that you please bless us tonight as we embark on this latest venture. Please bless us with your Spirit, your Holy Spirit, your grace and your wisdom. We thank you for giving us your Son Christ Jesus and the sacrifice that he made so that we may live a life full of knowledge of our salvation. We thank you, Lord, for everything that you have given us, and we ask that, please, we are able to carry out your will on earth as it is on heaven. We thank you, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
I was driving down number nine, this was about three or four weeks ago, and I stopped and saw a group that had some reflective shirts on that were picking up trash, and so wheeled on into Ingalls there and went to speak with them. And they'd collected quite a few bags, and I didn't recognize any of them. As it has turned out, they are the Parrot Head Club. There's a western singer, they follow this western singer, I forget.
Jerry Boggs.
And so they come out, and they've been doing this. This is the third time that they've come to Black Mountain, so I wanted to say thank you to them because that's awfully nice of them to come out and donate their time. We have a proclamation here, this is Human Rights Week, December 10th, 16th, 2014. Whereas the members of the United Nations signed the Universal Declaration of Human Rights on December 10th, 1948, and whereas we must, as individuals and as people, take a stand and continue to work together to make freedom, justice, and equal opportunity available for all, and whereas it has long been recognized by the people of our great nation that all men are created equal, that they are endowed with a creator with certain enabled and rights that are among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas our Bill of Rights guarantees these basic liberties, therefore I see Michael Sobel, Mayor of the Tannenbach Mountain, do hereby proclaim, signed this day, the 8th of December, 2014. All right, citizens' comment. Marilyn Sabanski from the Rainbow Recycling.
Good evening, everyone. During this holiday season, the post office and shipping services go on overdrive delivering packages, and after we open them up and the presents inside, we have the boxes and all that packaging material to deal with. Well, boxes can be collapsed and put with your curbside recycling, but the inner packaging, the styrofoam, the bubble wrap, peanuts, foam sheets, et cetera, cannot be put in your curbside recycling. And so Rainbow Recycling offers a special collection at this holiday time to help you out. We make it easy for you, and you'll get to see it right now. This is last year's event, so you can see how it goes. Look for the big white truck at Hopi, Hopi and Company. Bring your car, pull by the truck, and you'll have volunteers to help unpack. Luckily, last year it wasn't windy, so the styrofoam didn't try to blow away. We do take, as you saw, the Christmas lights as well. But please bring your packaging and styrofoam sorted and in separate bags. The really large pieces of styrofoam don't have to be bagged. We'll deal with that. And the packaging, we keep separate, and we make it available for artists, shops, galleries, local people of retail home businesses to reuse in their shipping purposes. We do this as a community event, a community service. We don't make any money, so we ask for a donation of a dollar per large bag of styrofoam so we can get it to the recycler in Hickory. But we have plenty of volunteers to help out, and we have a good time. We deal with the weather as best we can. Luckily, we had sunshine last year.
I think she wanted to get your information just of where things are coming from.
And we'll ask you, when you come, just where you're from, you know, are you from Black Mountain or neighboring community? What items did you bring, and how did you learn about it? But it's pretty much drive up, drop off, and be on your way. So please, do not put your packaging into your curbside recycling and bring it to this And each year, this is our seventh annual one coming up, each year we do it at Hopi's, or formerly known as Amazing Savings. Look for the big white truck, the big sign styrofoam. The bins are for the Christmas tree lights we also collect. So the date is Saturday, January 3rd, 10 to 1:00, and the snow date will be the following Saturday, same time, same place. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Dawn Trutwin, 111 Third Street, Black Mountain, North Carolina. Good evening, Board of Aldermen, staff, members of the audience. I've been speaking before you for the last, well, this is the third month, and so I'm not going to throw a lot of numbers out to you because I have yet to receive a call inquiring about the information that I've given or presented. My numbers are backed up, black and white, they're in print, and they have come, the information has come from many sources. I've gone over a couple thousand pages of documentation and cross-referenced and backed up my information. I do want to thank specifically town staff, the town manager, our chief financial officer, and any other staff person that I have contacted to get information from. They've readily made it available, and I really do appreciate that. I guess what I did want to say was, I as a citizen of Black Mountain have every right to be asking questions, to try to get information and clarification. I'm not on a witch hunt. My motivation is because a governing body and the people in charge and elected to take care of our taxpayer dollars should operate totally with an attitude of transparency and accountability for everything that is done. And I still feel that there is not information that's been forthcoming involving this town square project. Also, I would like to request a full accounting of all the fund budgeted dollars from 2010 through 2015 that have come from the town budget to fund and that have gone into this project. I've got approximately $46,000 through those years that has come from the town's budget. And we, as a community, have been told that not one more red cent was going to go into that project from the town's budgets, and that is not actually what has happened. I found this information in researching all of the information for the town square project. I thank you for your time, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and a safe and happy new year.
Thank you. Emily Beaver, please, from Owen High School, FFA. Just let me just, when the lights come on, you know, you'll have three minutes, you have the green, and then when the orange goes off, then they have to stop.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Emily Beaver. I'm from the Charles D. Owen FFA chapter. Myself and Sierra have come today to kind of give you guys an update on some of the things that we have accomplished this year and some of our progress, our projects in progress. I'd like to start off with our livestock program, which has grown this year. We have two Holstein steers, two sheep, and a goat. Each of these animals were taken on as a project individually by a student who raised them and took care of them and then showed them at the Haywood County Fair, the Mountain State Fair, as well as the state fair. This project, we're hoping to expand next year with the addition of our barn, and it is a great aspect in our program. And next, the forestry team competed this year in October. We took about 12 students. We had a junior team, a senior team, and some alternates, which is awesome. And our team placed first in Buncombe County, and will be advancing to compete for the state title in June. And then finally, I have to speak about is the barn project, which I'm sure many of y'all know about. I'd like to thank you all for your time and support and contributions to this project. As kind of a status update, we have cleared the site that has been given to us by the county, thanks to Mr. Ronnie Craig. The holes have been dug for the poles, thanks to Mr. Ross Austin, and we will be pouring cement in the next few weeks to get that project rolling. I would also like to thank in particular Ms. Ellen Frost for her contributions and funds, as well as support, and Mr. Don Collins for his great coordination of this project. I'd like to thank you all again for all of your help with the FFA. It could not be such a great chapter without support like you guys. Thank you.
Very good. Good work.
My name's Sierra Garringer, and I'm with the Charles D. Owen High School FFA. The first thing I'd like to talk about is, last weekend of October, we took about 15 students to the FFA National Convention in Kentucky. We also started fruit sales. They began at the beginning of November, and our estimated arrival date for the fruit will be Wednesday, December 10th. On November 15th, our land judging team of three students competed at the state level in Pitt County, North Carolina, and came out in the top 20 of the state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming, and we hope that you will continue to come and let the citizens know what y'all are doing. Good work. All right, now we go to Communications, Building and Planning, Josh.
All right, on the first page, we go to our permits, which stayed pretty much the same. Did have some new, about double or single-family new permits for this time, this year versus this time last year in 2013. Inspection numbers were up also by about 50 versus last year's numbers. As far as fees go, we were up about $20,000 this year versus last year for all permits. And then on the single-family construction, we're up about $15,000 versus last year. And as far as evaluations go of the projects these folks are doing, up about 1.7 million from last year versus this year. Peripis licenses, this is going to be a little confusing, so I'll explain it. 2013, we collected $30,000, billed $39,000. 2014, we billed $41,000 and only collected $15,000. Reasons for that, General Assembly passed some recent legislation where they basically took away the ability for cities and towns to tax businesses. It really hit us hard this year. We couldn't tax anything outside of city limits, and so that's why it's cut basically in half to $15,000. Beginning July versus next year, we're going to be able to tax any businesses, so it'll be basically flat. I know that they've, the General Assembly has discussed talking about how to make up lost revenue, but there's been nothing set in stone yet, so I don't really know the answer to that right now, so I'm just going to have to wait. Fees, obviously, we're down quite a bit from last year due to that reason. $840 with the new fees this year. New businesses were 13 versus 23 last year, so we are down a little bit on new business. And y'all stop me if you have questions. So for zoning complaints, about the same as last year. Violations are down considerably. Now, we're kind of taking a different approach. Instead of just sending out a violation notice to folks, we're sending out pretty much a warning letter to folks to see if we can get their attention that way, and it's worked actually really good. So the violation notifications are down a lot. Inspections are up quite a bit, from 80 to 134 this year. Zoning permits, we did not do zoning permits in 2013. We had a space on our building permit application where we talked about zoning, and the zoning administrator signed off on it. Now, we actually have a sole permit dedicated to zoning only, so that's why you had zero in 2013, and you've got 52 this time.
Hey, Josh, on complaints and violations, does it kind of, do your violations kind of flow from complaints?
Typically. Typically. Most of the time. We've been busy this year. Trainings, we've been to multiple trainings, all the staff attends different conferences, from zoning conferences to planning conferences, floodplain, stormwater conferences, water quality, economic development, a complete streets conference, and a plat reviewers course. As far as the stormwater goes, the first, the first one, LID, stands for Low Impact Development. What that really is, is it's a kind of a different way of looking at stormwater management. We take practices in mind that mimic and preserve natural drainage processes to manage stormwater. These are things like rain gardens or bio-retention cells and permeable pavement, so that's what LID stands for. Text amendments, we've been busy this year. We've done 16 total text amendments since my last report to you in June to the Land Use Code and Code of Ordinances. Grants, we recently received a $25,000 grant from the Pigeon River Fund, as well as $25,000 from 205J Funding, which is EPA funding. Land O' Sky Regional Council wrote that grant for us. We wrote the Pigeon River Fund grant. What we're going to do with that $50,000 is, you'll see in a minute on the next slide, but it's to pay for a watershed restoration plan, which we've really needed over the years. We're going to get that in place, and it's going to allow us to go after more funding opportunities to help with some of these stormwater projects and trying to clean up the Swanano River. ESTPDA funding, I know you're familiar with that. We've been talking about it for Greenway, Greenway Project. We wrote that and received that a couple of months ago, so we're still in the process of figuring out how we're going to skin that and getting the document signed for all that. So the studies, planning studies, the bicycle pedestrian study, I'm working with Jill with Parks and Recreation on that one. It hasn't started yet. It's on the verge of starting now. Like I mentioned, the Swanano River Watershed Restoration Plan is about to start. Stormwater mapping study, we had a stormwater study done in 2009 by a consulting firm. There were a few holes in it, and there were some suggestions in the study that we needed to go back and take a better look at outfalls, things like that. So we're going to be working with Land O' Sky for them to come out and actually do some GPSing of the outfalls, get us more of an exact location of this stuff, and have a study in place that can help us head off. For example, if someone spills something in this storm drain, we can head it off at this storm drain. Energy plan was done in 2009. I've been working with Lynn Martin with the State Energy Office, or what it used to be called, State Energy Office, to redo that plan. They've done the assessment a couple of months ago. We're in the process of writing that plan up now, and hopefully we'll see some big differences in what was in 2009 and what's been done now, so.
Give a little more detail on that, because that's a very broad subject area. Energy, I mean, is this energy, is this what we actually consume here as our trucks, as our conservation?
Not so much truck. It's just really been buildings. They came and looked at our lighting, heating and air, things like that. We did a study in 2009 that looked at that information. We looked at it again a couple of months ago, and we're going to compare the numbers to see if we've reduced or increased, and what we can do to reduce. Hopefully, there'll be some funding available to help us out if we decide we want to do some upfits to lighting, or, I know we did a roof at Carver, but maybe windows at Carver, things like that, so. More to come on that one. As only Board of Adjustment hearings, we did one variance, one appeal, and one conditional use permit this year. As far as outside meetings, we are involved in the NPO, Technical Advisory Committee meetings, and the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium quarterly meetings. And that is it.
Matt, did we talk one time, maybe over the past two months more than that, about the water, the GPS water?
Yeah, Josh, will you give them an update kind of where we are with the GIS mapping, not for the stormwater as much as with the water line mapping?
Yeah, we've been, we've been in contract with a company that has been doing this for us. Well, they've been holding the data, I guess, for us. We've been doing the GPSing ourselves. We've been in talks with Land O' Sky again to help us out on that, to try and save a little money. And we've been having some issues with our GPS unit and switching over to their software, just really outdated versions, more or less is what it is. John Beck with Land O' Sky has been working with ESRI, who's our software provider, to try and figure out that glitch, and he's assured me that it's going to be soon. So I'm hoping in the next month or so, we've got that figured out, and Jamie's guys can get back to work on doing the GPS and.
Yeah. And if we get that figured out, what would be a reasonable timeframe that says we could have most of our mapping done?
Depending on how much time that they can devote to it solely. If they could solely devote all their time to it, I would say two months, three months maybe. If they can't, maybe six months.
What I'd chatted with Matt about a time or two is, in the water fund, which is a little more comfortable the fund balance is, that, you know, to at least consider and discuss coming up with some money and paying to get it done, you know, with losing as much water as we lose, it might be worth thinking about and seeing what we could afford to do just to get this done. And what it would allow, what would allow Matt and all his group to do is to have a maintenance plan.
I think, though, that if we could make this switch over with the software, I feel pretty confident that we can allocate the time internally and still do this in a reasonable way. And I would point out too, just in terms of GPS mapping, the stormwater mapping that we're going to do that way, I think that is a requirement from the Phase II stormwater permits. We do need to do that. And that's an example of us, we're going to contract out to that GPS work and let somebody do that for us, and we can focus on the work that we're equipped to do. So I think that's a better use of our resources to break it up that way than it is to, because we can do the water line mapping internally, so we should probably focus on that. Now, if we, now, you know, if we run into a glitch and we say it's going to be based on time, you know, five or 10 years, and we need to go back and regroup again. But I feel comfortable that if we do the stormwater mapping and let Land O' Sky do that for us and map that out, that we can then handle the water line internally. And if, like I said, you're right, though, if it comes back and we say it's going to take us, you know, eight, nine, 10 years to do it, then that's not adequate, and we'll look at plan B for that.
Josh, do you know what's going on with the former Tyson Furniture Place down on Richardson?
Yeah, they are, I think, hopefully I don't misspeak on this, Red Radish is going to be moving, I think, both of their locations there. So they're redoing that building. I think their initial plan was to try and renovate, and they've decided against that, pretty much going to tear everything down and rebuild. Spring, I think, maybe is their anticipated date to get it done.
So they're going to knock the whole place down and?
I think they're going to keep slab, but yeah, pretty much knock down all the walls, I think, and rebuild, so. Should be a nice addition to that corner.
Really?
Yep. Here we go.
On the GPS, what is the accuracy of that now?
Depends on the unit you have. If you buy, I mean, they make units that are cheap and some that are about $10,000. Some of those are sub-foot, so they're, you know, they're 12 inches or better. The ones that are cheaper can be up to 10, 15 feet, so they're not really accurate.
That far out?
Yeah.
What do we have?
Ours aren't terrible, but they're not the best. They're not the 12-inch models, but I think they're around three or four foot, to be honest. So they're not too bad, but.
I would think that maybe that may be something to look into, because when you start looking at water lines, two to three feet could be a long distance there to have to. It can be, but I think when we cross-reference some of those things, Jamie's guys kind of know where, so we're not just flying blind entirely with it, and so I think we do have some.
We will, yes.
Yes, that's the ultimate goal, is to have a map that shows, so you can just, so anybody can look and see.
How far along are we with that? I mean, if you had to say percentage-wise.
50% might be.
And how long you been doing it?
Before I got here, for a few years.
Yeah. But I do think it's essential that we really, you know, get a, see where we are and see where we are in four months on it. And if we need to, you know, need to take a look at the water fund and consider, at least consider the expenditure, you know, to get it, make it happen, I think it'd be worth talking about.
Anybody else got any questions? Thank you very much, Josh. Next on the agenda there is Dean Lubie, our Chancellor of the Exchequer.
Mayor and Board, it's an honor to talk to you tonight. I'm going to go over first some general trends we have on cash and debt. Then I'm going to go over some fiscal year 14 results. Then I'll focus on the first four months of fiscal year 15, and I'll finish up with, we'll look a little closer at the golf course as we have recently took that back. If you want to ask some questions during my presentation, you're welcome to. Otherwise, we can wait until the end. If you have very difficult questions, you can wait until Goule Killian comes up after me and ask them. This first slide shows our overall cash balance since fiscal year 11 by quarter. You see that it kind of peaks in the March quarter, and that's really because of, mostly because of property taxes coming in. Most of those taxes come in in December and January, and then it kind of starts to decline. It usually is at its lowest, actually, well, right before taxes are actually officially due January 1st, so September is the lowest time. Over the years, it's gone nicely up, and that's something that I'm proud of, and that's good for the town. This next slide shows the total amount of debt we have owed by fiscal years, and I actually went ahead a couple of years to show what it will be if we do not take on any other further debt. Those first couple of years are a little bit misleading because we, in fiscal year 13, we bought a fire truck and some golf carts, and then there was some water and sewer debt, some pretty large debt that jumped on the books in fiscal year 12. So really, the decline, there should be a bit of a decline under fiscal year 11 and 12, but because of that new water sewer debt, it really doesn't show that way. You know, this, in fiscal year 14, that number went down about $600,000, partially because of us paying off the Clevenger debt early. In fiscal year 15, it's dipping down again, and you can see the trend. So that speaks well to our cash flow possibilities going forward and the work we put in in the last couple of years. This next slide shows our total principal and interest payments, and you can see how those peaked in the fiscal year 14. Again, that's partially because of Clevenger, but if you go ahead a couple of years here, you see fiscal year 16, 17, you know, what is that number? Right around $400,000 or $500,000, which that's, you know, really $200,000, $300,000 less than what we just spent. And that's money that can be either used for capital purchases, maybe pay off more debt, maybe build up the fund balance, or any other thing that the manager and board sees fit. So that's another nice trend, in my opinion. Next, these just show our general fund, fund balances. The red is maybe the color you folks are most concerned with. That is the unassigned fund balance. That has seen a little bit of growth over the years. It's right now at about 2.6. If you recall, we have about $7.5 million worth of general fund expenditures. I think that gets us around 35% is our percentage of unassigned fund balance, which our policy is to have 30.5, almost 31%. So we're a little over that. We could afford to build that, in my opinion, but it has sort of trended nicely. It did actually go down this year. Part of that is because of us paying off some debt and some... We, the golf course had an effect on the fund balance of the general fund.
Dean, in your opinion, you wouldn't mind seeing the fund balance being a little bit more than the current 35%?
Yeah, I think 40 would be a more comfortable level for us to be. It was up that high, maybe 2012 as a percentage, but yeah.
And Michael, do you remember where the 30.5 comes from, 30.5, as far as the...
No, that was before it passed, I got on the board, so that's 10 years ago.
I wonder if we should just consider, you know, with, you know, changing that number. It's a little confusing if none of us really know where it came from, and you have a different opinion as to what the fund balance, what a target should be.
Yeah, I have a document from a board, I think it was back in '01. I'm a little perplexed about how they came up with that exact number, 30.5, but...
But it might be time to revisit it sometime, so we at least have, you know, we've thought it through and have a number that...
I'm happy to do that, I'm more than happy to do that. I mean, I think it's done in a lot of governments on a, you know, you want to make sure that that's a number that the board and everybody is comfortable with, so I don't think that...
Keep in mind that that's just a moving target for any municipality, anywhere across the state, up from the minimum as set by the legislature at 8%.
Yeah, 8% really represents one month, one month worth of expenditures. And those totals are actually at June 30th. This is at the audit, at June 30th, that's one of those numbers. So that number can actually shift throughout the year, but typically, it's only looked at at June 30th, so.
It's a moving target, but it's a good, it's an easy number to communicate to the public, and for that reason, it might be worth revisiting sometime soon, just to see, maybe as we work through the budget.
I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to do that, yeah. Next, and this is, get on your reading glasses possibly, this is some fiscal year 14. I'm not going to try to overwhelm you with a lot of numbers, but these are some of the major revenues. And then I give you expenses compared to budget for each major department. On the revenue side, first of all, our biggest revenue, again, is property tax. It came in a little over budget at 103%. If you remember, we had a revaluation, and that kind of makes budgeting for that a little tricky in the first year. The DMV revenue shows a lot higher, that's because of some changes the state made in the tax and tag program, which most of you probably are aware of. Sales tax is another good one. We've seen some good growth with 2% or 3% growth every year on that. Franchise tax is actually down a bit, and I don't, I'll have to work on my budgeting on that one. Then, lastly, I included building permits. It's not a big part of our revenues by any means, but it's way over budget. And Josh talked about this a little bit, and I have a further slide on it, but it really is a positive trend for the town, and we'll get to that on the next slide. On the expense side of things, I'll be, I'll try to be brief here. Towards the bottom, the total general fund, basically the budget that Matt gave you in the beginning of fiscal year 14, we hit 96% of it on expenses. And that's a number that I'm proud of, because if that number gets too low, it kind of means that we're giving you a budget that has a lot of lag time in it, sort of, that if we want to do things. So I think you can feel safe that you're getting an honest budget, and we work hard to, we have to keep that number under 100. The water fund shows a little bit less, but that's mostly because of Jamie and his guys on the State Street water taps. We saved a lot of money in capital expenditures and some work that got done up on Carolina Heights. So, next slide. This is my building permit slide. In fiscal year 10, I actually, there was an extra $100,000 that I kind of wrote off. That was the Ingalls money, because that was a one-time event. I wanted this slide to sort of show the increase that we've had, you know, since fiscal year 12. We were under $100,000, now we got up to $160,000 in fiscal year 14. This year, through November 15th, we were at about 90 or so, and I would guess we're going to almost hit 200 or so for the fiscal year, which is just fantastic news if, you know, that those dollars usually end up adding to our property values. So those are very positive trends, in my view. Okay, next, these are, this is a slide that looks a little familiar, but it really shows the first four months of activity in this fiscal year. Let's see, towards the top, you know, the taxes, and that's normal for property taxes that we've received so little through October 31st. We're getting large payments every week now from Buncombe County. If we go down to water, our water sales are very solid, they're very consistent all the time, you know. Four months should be 33%, we're a little bit over that. Those next two under revenues are green fees and golf carts. And those actually show at 34% and 38%, which is good if we lived in an environment where you could play golf equally 12 months out of the year, which we don't. So we'll talk a little bit further about those on some future slides as well. Under the expenditure side of the world down below, let's see, I might have to consult my notes on this. And most of these really should be at about 33%. The one that sticks out right away is the public buildings, and that is because... Let's see, well, we pay our insurance bills from these things in the beginning of the year, and we paid the town square debt payment of almost $180,000. So it just so happens in that fund, we have some large payments that happen in the beginning of the fiscal year. But that's been the case every year, really. Couple other items, like in recreation, Casey has done some work at the Carver Center. That's why that expenditure shows so much more higher than last year. It's at 289 this year, and last year it was only at 192. So certain capital purchases can kind of sway those numbers from year to year. Towards the bottom of the slide there, both the water and golf funds are pretty much on target as they've been in past years. The golf numbers for the prior year are actually Billy Casper numbers that I've taken and adjusted a bit to make it comparable with our numbers. On the next slide, I think we, this is another one that's hard to see, but I have now started recording a monthly golf course income statement. And this is a trick I learned from Billy Casper, really, is I try to budget like our green fees and cart fees by month. And you can see those top two numbers, you know, for us to hit our budgets, I wanted us to be at about $116,000 for each green fees and cart fees. And we are quite a bit short on those two numbers, so that really doesn't bode well for the rest of the fiscal year. I think we're $62,000 under just on those two numbers. On the, as you go down the page, you can kind of see the expense side of the equation. Most of the expenses are in maintenance. Brent's pro shop is a little bit under budget. Our staffing has gone way down in maintenance. The expenses are actually under budget by $18,000, but our problem is that revenues are short by about 67. So through four months, we're $48,000, or I had budgeted us to make $28,000, and we have actually lost $19,000. So we're $46,000 under budget in those first four months. And golf is a conservative mine at this point, on the financial side. And I think I might have some other slides here that kind of tells you, this is about what? That is, I guess, about 15 years' worth of cart fees. The fiscal year 11 and 12 numbers are up around 250, which is nice, but those are also the numbers that we had, the membership giveaway. And part of that deal was, you barely paid anything for a membership, but you had to take a cart. So that, those numbers are a little bit, in my opinion, artificially inflated. And you'll see that when you go to the next slide, which is green fees. And you can see how low fiscal year 11 and 12 are, because these people paid $200 and got to play golf for two years or whatever, and just had to pay cart fees. Both of those numbers, we would like to be certainly north of $200,000, probably close to 250, actually. So, and you can, if you look at those slides, we've hit those numbers at times in some of the years past, but golf is a challenging, very challenging industry these days. A lot of people are actually concerned about rounds as well. This sort of shows that we're, we get around $20,000, maybe a little more, maybe a little less. I'm more concerned with dollars per round than I am probably rounds, because just because you have a lot of rounds doesn't mean that those green fees and cart fees numbers are automatically going to be high. So, let's see, next we have, this is an interesting slide. This is, that's about 20 years' worth, I guess. And this sort of shows you how salaries in golf have increased over time. And as they kind of peak out there is when, you know, we start... Expenses started exceeding revenues quite a bit around fiscal year '05 or '06. I've done some analysis that shows that if we spend, whatever our revenues are out there, our salaries, our total salary cost has to be 50% of that or less, because you also have course maintenance costs and a lot of other things that go on. You can also see how those numbers have dipped in the last couple of years. Casper was a part of that, because they put on a lot more part-time workers, and they saw the problem, and we've kind of, we've learned from them in that regard as well. Next slide shows, most of the salaries involve really the maintenance area, not the pro shop. So if you, right now, we have about 9,000 hours of maintenance budgeted. A full-time person is 2,000 hours, so that's really about four full people, four and a half full people throughout the year. Robbie does not use four people, four and a half people throughout all 12 months. He, you know, he has the freedom to use seven or eight during the summer and barely any right now. But if you even go back three or four years, you know, we used to have close to 14,000 hours out there. And the fact that he's keeping that course in that kind of shape with only 9,000 hours, he should be commended for that, because I don't know how he does it, but he's doing a great job out there. Lastly, I guess that is the last one. Does anybody have any questions at all?
No, I just had, when you, on this, go back to page four and five there, where you have golf carts budgeted, current budget, and then you got golf cart fees on page five.
Can you get us there, Darlene? One more, maybe, or a couple, I don't know, four or five? Does that look like the one you're talking about, Matt?
It's the seventh slide. That's the fees. Now, those fees there represent what? Is that the total fees that you collected, that the golf course collected in FY14?
That is correct, for cart fees. And what Brent sometimes does is, he'll have kind of a package at times, so like a weekend package, and then he'll allocate those numbers between green fees and cart fees proportionately. Now, fiscal year 14 looks particularly dim, but if you remember, the rain that we had about a year ago, that really started in July. So Casper's numbers, I just looked this up, because I figured this question might come up. Casper, in the first three months of last year, July, August, September, budgeted like $100,000 in cart fees and came in at under 50. And that was, the rain really came in July and August, and that really affected the fiscal year 14 numbers. The fiscal year 14 numbers are 10 months for the Casper and two months for us, but I just put them together. But that number is particularly low, as you see.
Because I'm seeing here that you've got 238...
Budgeted.
Budgeted for the year.
Yeah, and that, right now, that's a...
That's a lot of golf carts.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think we're at, by the end of December, we'll be close to like 100 or so. And I've just talked to Brent, and he feels that the second half of the year will be a little bit better, but I think it'll be a stretch to hit that budget for both cart fees and green fees, which are, really, those are 80% of your golf revenues. If those two numbers, I can look at those two numbers and tell you how the golf course is going to do.
How many more years do we have on plan on the golf carts?
We have this fiscal, we have another payment to make in January, and then a payment in January of '16. And once we get that finished, that will be $60,000 in expenditures that we will not have to budget.
And then from then on, that's the $60,000 we're not going to be spending, but the golf cart's going to last approximately 10 years, so we'll have, what, seven years?
That's an excellent point, and that's, I'm aware of that one, and I'm happy about that one.
I would point out, and Dean could, and that's entirely true, but I think there's also some, there will be the potential for capital expenditures in that, you know, as we move forward, too, with the irrigation systems and other things.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Or you're, but you know, the membership, the membership fees are good. Because those, no, they're going to come in in the spring.
Yeah, they usually come in in the spring, and membership has increased a little bit. It's not going to be the level that it was back in the late '90s or early 2000s. Brent has, we probably have 20, 30 new members this year already, but still, those dollars, as, they still only make up maybe 25% of that total budget.
Yeah, you need green fees, you need non-member green fees, is what you need.
Yeah, yeah.
Dean, what are we charging at the rental on the 19th hole now?
Well, we are getting $400 a month from the gentleman running the kitchen there. He, any profits that he makes or losses that he takes in are really his business. So really, in fact, our $400 rental, pretty much, it probably covers the utilities and a little bit more. So we're really not trying to make money there. We're basically trying to keep it open, so that if the golfers would like a hot dog and a beverage, they can get that.
Are we renting out the meeting dining space, any?
Yeah, he at times has, he at times has parties and stuff that he'll put on, and they'll talk to him about catering. And the town right now is not taking any cut of that, that's all his, that's his doing.
No, I mean, the open area. Like, if someone wanted to have a birthday party or something down there, the town's not getting that?
Yeah, the town is not involved with that right now. Scott is... Scott is, is entirely involved with that. That was part of the contract that we, that we did up six months ago.
Six months, whenever, whenever we started up with them, because I think what, the rationale there was that, that had been a part-time employee for Billy Casper Golf, and they were taking on all the beverage and, and food expenses, and that was not proven to be worthwhile for them. And so to try to mitigate some of that, we just said, look, if you, if you'll guarantee that we, that we get this per month, we'll, we'll, we'll lay that risk in, on, on him at the nineteenth hole and, and let him take his chances, that he can make money or not make money out there. But we don't, we can't lose money out there.
And I think part of the reasoning for him was, he felt pretty good in the busy season, but in the, in the winter seasons, I think he thought, I'm going to, parties and stuff, and stuff will be the way that I make money or break even during those winter months.
And one of the conditions for him was that we had set, set hours and said, these are hours that you must be open. You must work, you know, seven days a week, these hours, some, somebody will be here in the, in the busy months. Now, now then we've become more, more flexible, obviously, as the season winds down and say, look, you know, be open if you can be open. But he has to, he has to make some of those business decisions if we don't make those on his behalf.
Any other questions?
Okay, Dean.
Thank you very much.
Next will be our auditors. Harold Cole. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to, just do that. I'm just going to introduce Harold Cole, and I think, and Dan Melanix is here too, and then we'll do the financial statement.
And we have Jessica Bissett, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jessica Bissett.
Don't want to leave anybody out there. Does everybody have the big report? Okay, that's your comprehensive financial report. We're pleased, obviously, again, to have served as your auditors for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. And we're here to talk about your comprehensive annual financial report, which we refer to as your CAFR for short. The CAFR is made up of four sections. It's an introductory section, a financial section, statistical section, and a compliance section. And I'd like to direct you to pages one, two, through three, which is our auditor's report. It's right after Roman numeral seven. Does everybody see that? Okay, that's our independent auditor's report. I'd just like to go through that with you and explain it. The first part says, "Report on the financial statements", and that's just basically telling you that we audited your basic financial statements and described what your basic financial statements are. The next section talks about your responsibility, which you are ultimately responsible for the financial statements and having internal control systems in place to assure the financial statements are reliable. The next section talks about our responsibility, which is to obtain sufficient evidence to be able to express an opinion on the financial statements. And if you flip to the next page, at the top, you will see our opinion, which we're pleased to report states that we believe the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, and that's referred to as an unqualified opinion. The next section there, "Required supplementary information", that's information that's required by government auditing standards. It's your management's discussion and analysis on pages four through eleven, and information on funding progress of the law enforcement officer's special allowance. And you'll find that on page forty-four. And I, I would encourage you to read the management discussion and analysis. It gives an excellent overview of the CAFR and the financial highlights for two thousand and fourteen, and a lot of the information you saw a while ago, presented by Dean. Then the next section talks about supplementary information. And again, our job was to, to audit the basic financial statement, but the CAFR contains certain information on the various fund statements located on pages forty-three through fifty, which we did audit along with the financial statements, and we believe those schedules are fairly presented. And finally, there's a statistical section on pages fifty-one through seventy, and we did not audit that information, and so we get no opinion on that. And on pages seventy-one and seventy-two is our report on internal control of our financial reporting. And in an audit, we review your internal controls, not for the purpose of offering an opinion on your internal control system, but for helping us to determine the types of tests we need to do in the circumstances. So we tested compliance with various laws and regulations in, in doing so. But we do tell you about any instances of non-compliance that we note. And we did not note any instances of non-compliance. We noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So, that's very good. And finally, you received, again, last year, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. It's awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association. And June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen was the third consecutive year that you received that. It's a very prestigious award for governmental units. We believe that the CAFR, that this year will qualify for that award again in two thousand and fourteen. Any questions? And Dan's going to talk to you in a minute.
Well, good evening. I was glad to see Dean come up and give you a lot of financial numbers, so that'll kind of shorten my, some of my numbers. But it's good to see graphs and see trends over the time. And I would fairly say, is, is if you look the last four or five years, the numbers for this year are pretty positive in general for, for your town. One thing I'd, I'd suggest you to do in your financial statements, turn to page seven. Page seven there. This gives you a snapshot. If we were all bankers in this room, this is what the banker would want to look at. And you can see, it says, "The Statement, Government-Wide Financial Analysis, the Town of Black Mountain's Net Asset Numbers." And if you look at the far right corner, two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and thirteen, this shows you a picture where the town stands with all your assets and all your liabilities. And you can see that from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen, your total government-wide golf course, the water and sewer, the general fund, you increased your net assets from five point, fifteen point three million to fifteen point eight million. And the previous year, that, this, from thirteen and fourteen, is a four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollar increase. The previous year, it went up six hundred thousand dollars. So in the last few years, you can keep seeing, you're paying down your debt. Like this past year, you made an attempt, or made an attempt, you actually did pay extra to pay off the debt early. The other item that auditors always want to look at is the general fund. If you turn to page fifteen, actually, page fourteen, sorry. Page fourteen, this shows you your general fund. And you can see what Dean talked about, your fund balance, and I'll harp on this again. Your unassigned fund balance is two point four million dollars. That, that's about thirty-four percent of your annual expenditures. And one thing that Dean mentioned was, over time, your expenditures with inflation, just inflation, are going to go up. So your fund balance, not percentage of, your fund balance should be going up slowly over time to be in line with inflation. And I, I believe if you went back and they said thirty point five percent, and that's almost exactly between three and four months. And the LGC strongly suggests in that range, three to four months, and also the GFOA, to provide those resources, because they look at, June thirtieth is that time of year. It's not the height, when you receive all your tax, I have a warrant tax money, but it's, it's on an average during the year, this is how much cash we have for the next three months, if, if we weren't going to receive any additional revenue for the next three months. So that is one reason, I believe, they probably set that mark at thirty point five percent. But I will, I was, I will say one thing, I know you mentioned about, you mentioned about raising your goal slowly over time. If you turn to page, it's in your notes, page forty in your notes. And this, and, so with your budgeting process, if you say, "My budget is thirty, I must have thirty point five percent as our minimum fund balance", you have to be, one thing you have to be careful of, is you can see there, it's, it breaks down the fund balance, and really, you have your working capital policy of two point three million dollars. That's your thirty point five percent. But then, you appropriate funds for the next fiscal year. So when you do that, you take it in this calculation, and you can't appropriate funds for the next year if it goes over your thirty point five, hundred, over your thirty point five percent. So right now, June thirtieth, you could appropriate about another hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in the next year. So that is the one area you have to be careful of. Over time, you can raise the thirty point five, but you don't want to say, "Let's do thirty-five percent, we have thirty-five percent", because what you don't want to do is, if you have something that you really inappropriate fund balance for the June, July of the next fiscal year, you might have your hands tied unless you go back and lower your, your, your policy. So I would just be careful with that. Let me see, that was one, one thing I wanted to, to mention. And if you go back to page fifteen on exhibit four, this is your general fund. This, this shows your revenues and expenditures. Dean did a really good job showing that. And, but you can see during your year, your fund balance overall remained, it's consistent with the prior year, went down seventy-five thousand dollars during the year. But that is also due to, you can see above there, on the general fund side, you had principal payments of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. In the previous year, you only had two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in principal payments. And also, there's that transfer that occurred during the year to the golf course fund. But if you take those two abnormal, or not abnormal, those two transactions outside of, of this general fund, your, your net asset, your, your fund balance for the fund would have increased about five, six hundred thousand dollars, and that's a pretty much equivalent to the previous year. So you can see, I guess, comparing years to years.
You know, Dan, and maybe you're going to go over it, but, but actually, just the next page on sixteen.
Okay.
I was looking at that with Dean this morning, and, and wanted to point it out, because if you start, and at least, you know, Dean's thought was a reasonable way to look at your seventy-nine thousand dollar deficit. It comes over, that's sort of, it's, it's not quite a cash number, but you could kind of look at it a little bit that way. But then, to get to this four fifty-six, nine seventy-two, the net increase in, in the, in the government fund balance, it's really, you know, I, I think what, what, I think it's important to note for the public, and also for us, as we're, you know, looking at our budget, is you actually just don't have that much wiggle room in there. I mean, you're, you're, you're really spending, I mean, Dean does a budget. He spends ninety, you know, he has a, he comes up with a budget, we pass it, and we're spending about ninety-some percent of that. And it gives us a little bit of padding, but, and that's appropriate, because it's taxpayers' dollars, and we want to, you know, use all of them. But when you get to this net increase in, in the fund balance, it's a, it's sort of a value concept, but it's not a cash concept. And so you don't want to create any illusion that you've got, you know, that you've got something there that you could spend or something. It's, it's more on a cash basis, you're at break even or actually a little bit below that.
And then the other, you mentioned about the water fund during the year on page nineteen, just to bring it to your attention. Your operating income for the enterprise fund above the interest payments was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The previous year was thirty-five thousand dollars. And you could see there was some reduced costs during the year. And the last thing I want to mention is, there was some changes with the DMV collections. And DMV collects now the, the property taxes associated with your vehicle during the year. But with your real property during the year, your collection rate went, went on a different page, has gone up to ninety-nine point four eight percent. And it was ninety-nine point two percent. There's some local towns near you that are around ninety-eight, ninety-seven. But ni- ninety-nine point four three percent is a, is a good rate, overall rate, to collect your, your taxes. The last thing I want to mention is, on pages seventy-two, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, and Harold mentioned this, and this is our opinion on, on internal controls. In the previous year, we did a single audit with, with federal state funds. There was, the funding this year was under the threshold where that was required. But last year, we did have a finding about the budget. Last year, he talked about never go over a hundred percent. Well, the previous year, there was, was it the one function? We had one function that went over. Well, this year, there was none, which is, is, is good. But you also can see is, yes, you could put a budget and have a huge number that you never go over, but if you get, if you're pretty much getting close at ninety-six percent, ninety-seven percent, you can really tell your budgeting is done at a level it needs to be. And, and I'll, I'm, you're my client, and, but you're very fortunate to have Dean here. He's very detailed, and you can, I could tell by his presentation, he understands the numbers. There's a lot of finance directors out there that semi, they may be very good people persons, but then they don't have, know the numbers. And I think that Dean's very good at both, and, and very, you're very fortunate to have him here. Any questions on the audit?
Any questions? Very good, thank you, we appreciate that. Yes, we certainly do feel that we're fortunate to have Dean.
Mr. Mayor, you do need a motion to accept the auditor's report, please.
All right, here, such, so move. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's get on the consent agenda.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you've got the adoption of minutes from your November Agenda Workshop and your regular session. You've got a budget amendment for the Lib Harper Playground. If you recall, we received ten thousand dollars from Buncombe County as a contribution to that, Casey worked on that, and that, that showed up in this, just for years. He gave a budget amendment to reflect that revenue. You've got a, a resolution to authorize the submission of a part-of grant for improvements at the Town of Black Mountain Rec Park. Those are to do a pavilion and a, and a playground at the ball fields, an outdoor kitchen and a pavilion on the community garden side, additional parking and trails associated with purchasing the property adjacent to, to Rec Park. And so we would request a resolution to, to apply for that grant in January. That is, that is a fifty-fifty grant that we would hear about next, late next spring. It doesn't actually come, it's not actually awarded until July first, so it's, it wouldn't impact our budget until July two thousand and fifteen. Then you've got a schedule for the Agenda Workshops and the regular sessions for two thousand and fifteen. You've got a request to appoint Craig Bannerman on the Fireman's Local Relief Fund Board. We've got two calls for public hearing, one for text amendments to subdivision design standards, which is basically the width of sidewalks is what that's addressing. And then text amendments to the conditional use application, just to give us some flexibility when, when people do need to turn in a conditional use application of what the requirements are for that application. And those are your, those are your consent agenda items, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a motion to pass consent agenda?
Submit.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, before we have the new business, we've got, do we have any citizen comment? Anybody wish to speak? Anybody wish to speak? Not seeing anybody leaping forward. Go ahead and give us the new business, Adam.
Yes, sir. That is a request from Buncombe County to dedicate two pieces of property, one at 125 East Street and one at 299 Flat Creek Road. These are parcels, they don't have any, anything on them. They do, they were during the, during the floods of 2004, I think FEMA came in and, and had make them, gave those properties to the county because they were flood prone and unable to be built on. They do have deed restrictions that would not allow for any building. They would only allow for open space or passive uses in that regard for those two, those two parcels. They are right along, of course, Flat Creek and the, the county wants to donate them to the town. We're not collecting any taxes on them now. We have, a couple of years ago, did do a public input session at, at the Carver Center of what the community out there might want to see on that piece of property. And I think the consensus was that, that it was, it was, it was be in line with the deed restrictions are, which is they would like to see not, you know, not, not much, not, not, not an intense use, not maybe a park bench and, and areas like that. I think there's, the, the issue here is more who, who is going to take care of the property in the future. It's, like I said, it's county-owned property now. They've asked to dedicate it to the town and, and they've, they've done that, that work for us so we can just move forward with it that way. And about, about getting to answering questions, I would point out that there are two, there are two individual parcels and they are either side of, either side of Flat Creek, right there at the intersection of East Street and Flat Creek Road.
Aren't these, you say they're, they're flanking or they, they are contiguous, right?
They're not.
Well, one is on, one is on the left side.
If you come down, if you come.
Of the river and one's on the right side.
Yes, that's right.
Towards Montreat.
Yes, so the, the river splits the two, the two pieces, they're on, they're on either side of the river. So there are two parcels and I guess that's what, they, they, they touch each other, but they're, but they're on each, either side of the, of the creek or the river.
Do we hear any, do I hear a motion to accept, to accept this?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, do we have any unfinished business by chance?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll go on into the public hearing. First public hearing, we're dealing with planning and zoning. So Josh, if you'll come forward and enlighten us as to what we're, the board's going to be voting on.
You may, you may want a motion to open the public hearing.
Well, I was just going to get in first and then, and then go ahead and do it.
Sure, this is, in our previous code, we had this provision in that code and then for whatever reason, they didn't make it to the new, to the new 2010 code that was adopted. What it essentially does is provides a set location for people to place shut-off valves, which would be three feet within the town's meter. That way they would be easily located if something were to go awry and they needed to dig up water lines, would know where the shut-off valve was. I know there's instances where we do run water lines quite a few, quite a long ways to a house. If you don't really know where the shut-off valve is, then it could cause issues. So this is about a $3 expenditure. So it would only be for people installing new shut-off valves. It wouldn't be, we're going to make you go out and install this valve.
Okay, so this would not only, I mean, it's a shut-off valve for $3, but it's going to have to have its own unit to be able to, so that someone could get down into the ground and actually turn it off then. I mean, we're not talking about having a shut-off valve in the ground that's covered.
It has to be accessible.
Yeah, it's got to be accessible. So it's, that's just the same $3, it'd be a little bit more because you're going to have to get.
The box.
A, a box so that someone can get down in there or lean, lean down in there with their arm and actually, you know, hit the gate valve or the ball valve, whichever, whichever one that they, that they put on. Do we specify whether, which of those two valves?
We do not.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing is, we now have a public hearing to consider this motion. If anybody wished to speak in the audience? Seeing none, it's motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now I need to hear a motion to adopt ordinance O14-16 to amend text sections to the building codes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Now to adopt the statement of consistency, I need a motion.
So moved.
Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It also passed unanimously. Okay, next, Matt, we'll let you talk about this. And this is the voluntary annexation of property owned by Givens Highland Farms.
Yes, sir. Givens Highland Farms has requested they, to annex the portion of their property directly north of, of the existing property. It's actually one parcel now. They've combined their parcels and this is the last portion of that, that is outside the town limits. And so to consolidate that into one neat parcel. And I think it's your, you know, I, we've given you copies of their, of their request, but I think we put a larger color picture at your desk so you can see a little easier of what, what we're talking about, but you can see that it's directly north of that. Ultimately, their goal is to develop that with townhomes and additional living. And so they have made the request to be voluntarily, voluntarily annexed. They have turned in their petition. We've, they, and they, they provided us a, an annexation survey today so we could have that, have that recorded. I know that our discussion at the agenda session focused a little bit on, on the potential, at least from the past annexation that we'd had that involved the need for an easement for, for sewer extension. Although that's, that's not related to this exact, to this portion that we're discussing today. Ron has been kind enough to, to change the ordinance slightly so that what, what, what the ordinance says now is that we will, and I'll, as a matter of fact, I'm going to read it so that it's, so that we're accurate with it. But what it, the, the section that was added says that as an inducement to the town to accept the petition and to annex and describe property, the petitioner has committed to providing an easement to the town for the extension of sewer services to the Cragmont Road community of the southern portion of its property at a location to be determined to be the most effective for providing sewer service to Cragmont Road while being the least disruptive of the petitioner's development plans. So that, with that, the, the basic idea here is that the ordinance then goes into effect on the 15th of January 2015. If we don't, if we can't pin down an agreement on that, then, then it would not, it would not go into effect. I think that, that's what the, that's what the law says. It becomes void and has no force of effect if it's not confirmed before that date. And so, and, and I'll, and I don't want to speak for Dave Henson, who's the executive director and is here, but, but, but what that, what that does then is it allows, it allows you to go ahead and approve the annexation on the premise that the, that, that the voluntary annexation should be valid as of January 15th. It gives us that amount of time to, to work out what, what'll amount to a letter, I believe, from, from Givens Highland Farms saying that, that, that they are comfortable with wherever the location of this is, which is going to be at the southern portion, kind of along where, might be correct me if I'm wrong here.
Okay, but I think you need to use, I think you need to use east.
East is probably better.
It's on the east side.
Yeah, that's a better description, the southern side.
Southern side. It'd be on the east, it's in that northeast corner there. Basically extending up from wherever that last manhole is to your property line. Because then it'd be incumbent upon us to secure the other rights of ways if we extend that line on up towards car.
My understanding was that previously, and I don't want to speak out of turn, is that, is that there was, the reason that, the reason that wasn't done in the past because there was the potential for purchasing a piece of property for Highland Farms at that time. They, they in, in the interim have made those purchases and, and so the, the impetus for why that was, why that was held up then doesn't exist now.
Yeah, and rights of way for the sewer, for, for an eight-inch line would be 20 feet. And so that is not necessary to have an actual sewer line designed by MSD to have it put in there. It's just because it would probably go right up on the edge of that creek.
But, and Ron, you correct me if I'm wrong here, but what would, what would, what you would be approving tonight then is that, is, is an annexation ordinance that agrees, that, that allows for the annexation to go into effect on January 15th under the premise that we will, in the, between now and January 15th, have a, have an agreement on where that easement will be. And if we can't come to that agreement, then it, it would be delayed until we could come to an agreement.
Right.
So do we, when we get to that point, do we want to, to, to change, just to make a change, a change to the ordinance as it, it is written to say community, Cragmont Road community on the eastern, of the eastern portion of its property?
If you're going to adopt it, do that.
Beg your pardon?
If they have to plan to adopt it, what I hear is that.
I'm sorry, say that again, what we're going to, we're going to.
We're up in the southern, let it be eastern.
Okay.
Which portion of Highland Farms property.
Okay.
Okay, I need to hear a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we now have a public hearing that is open on this voluntary annexation. And if anybody has any questions, wants to address this, please come forward. Very good. No one showing up. And we will go to closing the public hearing. Do I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? So I need to get a motion to adopt ordinance O14-17, voluntary annexation into the Town of Black Mountain of a property listed with the identification number as you have written in front of you. Any discussion?
Do we want to make that one change?
Yeah, well, you can just throw the word in as amended, because we know, but we just scratched out southern and put eastern there.
Mr. Mayor is an employee of Highland Farms. I'm recusing myself from this vote.
Very good.
If I may, I don't think Mr. has a direct financial interest in the, in this. You own stock in the company?
Well, I'm an employee. I get paid by them.
Won't affect your paycheck if it'll be annexed. Well, I hope it won't affect you.
Just put that in right, Ron.
You can't accuse yourself, but since you refuse to vote, it will be, need to be a voted favor motion.
Well, strike that then. Strike that.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Maggie Megan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right. Communication from the staff.
The only thing that I, I have, I'll just remind you that on Thursday morning, it's right by the, you correct me at 8:30. We have discussions again about the Greenway extension and the grant that we've received. And on those occasions, there were a lot of questions that came up with the last one. We will have, we've gotten answers that say possibly this and possibly that. We'll have those burned up by, by Thursday morning and get that information to you. But I just want to remind.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty, yes, sir. And I think that's all that I have.
All right, we got any communications from the board?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to mention this is the third year anniversary of Maggie and I being sworn in as new members to this board. Along with Mike, who had another term added to his many that he served. One of the, the things that was, that was of interest was the budget that was presented today. And I just want to mention that some of us were criticized for making so-called Alderman promises. And those so-called Alderman promises, the only two that, that, that I made were that I'd like to see the fund balance increased and I'd like to see town debt decreased. The fund balance is bigger, or is, is bigger than it was when we, when we were sworn in three years ago. And our debt is approximately $1.3 million less. So that's a so-called Alderman promise that I'm proud to claim. That's it.
Very good.
A couple of things, Mike, Mr. Mayor. One is to, another congratulations to, for an undefeated season up to the, next to the last round of the playoffs for the Owen Warhorses. Passing that along from Alderman Stone over here, who's, can't speak very, very, very well tonight. But it's, obviously we all congratulate them on a great season. But I also wanted to mention, just briefly, and you might want to chime in too, just what a, a grand event Arbor Day was down at the, down at the dog park. And I, after you left, I went and got my wife and came back. She likes to see if I could train her to prune trees and so forth. But no, she enjoys that sort of thing. But there were what, 10, 10 arborists or so there?
10 arborists from the Western North Carolina Arborists Association that was down there showing how to properly prune trees, which I, I have learned, I learned a lot from them. Of course, needless to say, I learned a lot from my wife years ago when I went out basically to try to do crew cuts on bushes, which is not the proper way of pruning. But I know that was very good though, for them to donate their time.
Well, they also brought all their equipment over, I mean, bucket trucks and they did all kinds of work down there for, they worked until, from about nine till two. It's volunteer time. It was really quite impressive. But took the time to explain, do a great deal of teaching all along the way for the folks who were there. And so it was, it was really quite an incredible event as far as Stokes giving their time to the community.
Absolutely.
I'd also like to thank the chamber for holly jolly, I think it was Friday night. And also would like to thank them for yesterday's Christmas, I mean, Saturday's Christmas parade. We all had a good time in it, got to ride the golf carts again, got to race with Alderman Stone and Alderman Harris. My wife did, yeah. But I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And we'll see you guys next year.
One last thing was that, to follow up on Alderman Shauer's comments on the, the weekend, I was, I've never seen so many people in Black Mountain. For the holly jolly and for the, and, and for the previous Friday night that they, that people were there, you know. I mean, it's unbelievable how many people were in town. We've got a thriving little town. Very good. Y'all have a Merry Christmas. We'll see you next year.